...the United States of America, and in particular the body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need approval of minutes and reports. Twelve, nine, Park Department, Police Department, Engineering Code Office, Health Department, and the planning division. Need a second?
Sir. Christine?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Any audience comment on any of the agenda items in front of you? Okay, uh, do you see, CDVG update?
Am I supposed to stand at the podium now?
If you want to use a podium, please use a podium, please.
We're always there and all that.
I like those shoes.
They like the shoes.
These are the best shoes ever.
The first thing on the list is Act Ninety. If you recall, the city has pledged CDVG funds to match the light remediation efforts of the county through Keystone communities grant funds. They were awarded those grants. So now we have forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars of additional funds to use for demolition and light in the city. In order to use those funds, one of the requirements of the county and the housing authority is that the city adopt Pennsylvania Act Ninety, which is the Neighborhood Light Reformation and Revitalization Act. Basically, it allows municipalities to apply court actions against owners of properties with serious code violations with judgments against the owner's assets, not just liens against the blighted properties, provides for extradition of out-of-state owners for deteriorated properties for prosecution, and allows municipalities to deny applications for certain municipal permits and approvals, including but not limited to rental housing licenses. If the applicant is the liquid one taxes or other municipal charges, or if the applicant owns a property that is in serious violation of codes and has taken no substantial action to bring the property to a code compliance. That's the biggest one for you here in the city, is that if somebody does own all of the properties, and some of them or all of them are in violation of your code, you can deny them a rental license, or you don't have to update their rental license. That's a big deal. But the county is requiring that you do adopt Act Ninety in order to use these matching grant funds. I don't know where that needs to go from here, because I don't know what you have to do. Advocateize it or something? You have to do anything like that?
Yeah.
Terry will probably know what to do.
He'll know for the next meeting.
Just know you have to adopt that. The second thing on the list is the code of conduct. This is just a piece of administrative business for your CDVG program. Each of the grantees through the CDVG entitlement program has adopted a code of conduct, and for some reason, we don't have one in the master file at CEDOC for the city. So basically, it just says, "Any contract or purchase where an official has a personal interest should be closely scrutinized as to its legality. In any cases, the appearance of honesty and impartiality are as important as fulfilling legal requirements." When community development block grant program funds are involved, any areas in question related to this code should be addressed to the DCED, Office of Community Development and Housing, or the City of Sundary Solicitor per determination." So that's just in front of you this evening for your signature, Mayor. There's a copy for you and a copy for the master file at CEDOC. The resolution for filing for a proposal fund, that would be the Chestnut Street project. You have the resolution in front of you this evening. Again, there's two there, one for you and one for me to take back for the application. We're applying for five hundred thousand dollars of Keystone community development funds through DCED to help fund the Chestnut Street reconstruction project. We did have a public meeting this evening for that purpose, as they require us to have one to apply for the grant. So basically, I would need you to take action to adopt the resolution to apply for those grant funds. Take any questions? I did hand out a sheet that had the information on it, so if you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
We talked about this in the past meetings, so I'm sure you don't have to know about Chestnut Street. Okay?
Do you want to take action to adopt that?
Yeah, I'll make that form a motion, taking the application, do that, and sign by the mayor.
Second?
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Just got a couple of other things here. The matching funds commitment letter is on your agenda. I have two here again for you, Mayor, to sign. Basically, it's just for in the grant application for the Keystone grant that saying that the city has committed these funds. It doesn't mean they're all needed. It doesn't mean you're going to have to use all of them. It just means if the project budget comes in where we say it is, based on our budget in the application, the city has committed to share local funds. No action is required, but I just need those signed. So you can take them back and put them in the application. All right, next. Jim, do you want to talk about, or do you have these proposals from CES Engineering for the additional work? That's going to be coming out of the local fund. What we have, we asked CES Engineering, who is our engineer on this Chestnut Street project, to provide us with a proposal for additional work for both the traffic light design from Front to Kent Street, and then the traffic signal upgrades at Second Street. His proposal is twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars for the traffic signal upgrades and fifteen thousand dollars for the street lighting. Tonight, I would ask that council take action to approve that work, and again, it would be through this grant program with CDVG and Keystone money and liquid fuels and the local funds. That would be part, that's all rolled into that budget that you see in front of you already.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept. The bid?
I'll second it. Any questions? What she's referring to in Chestnut Street?
This is the reconstruction of Chestnut Street.
Twenty-four thousand is redesign intersections of Chestnut and Second, and upgrade the intersection with the copper crosswalks and lighting system in there. And fifteen thousand is taking the design work from Front Street to Royal Street, Ten Street, the lighting package like we just put on Royal Street, basically the same we see in Front Street, same style lighting. That's what those two are called out there. Any questions?
And the whole project is a half million, five hundred dollars.
Correct. Now, the whole project is four point five million dollars.
Right, right. Or this application, she said.
That application, Keystone application is for five hundred thousand dollars.
That's right. It's a separate grant for this project here.
Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Right here.
Yes.
Okay. Just as an update, we are ready to proceed with doing code enforcement mapping activity. So January twentieth at four-ish, four-thirty, we're going to meet at the Municipal Authority Building to talk about creating the spreadsheet to list all the light indicators that we've talked about in the past, and then get started on having someone enter data from the code office, the police department, tax office, municipal authority. I did email everyone to ask them for their opinions, if they felt there was anything else we needed to include in that spreadsheet that we're going to be doing. You're all welcome to come to that meeting at four-thirty at the Municipal Authority on the twentieth. I'm going to be working with Dan and with his guys there to put together that spreadsheet so that we can then import all the data into ArcView and map it. And finally, I've asked Terry to come up with a date, especially for you new guys, to have what we call CDVG 101, where basically Bill Segal and I come down here and meet with you, go over the CDVG program, tell you what it's about, tell you what kind of things we can fund and how we have to fund them, and all of those things. So Terry will be getting with you guys to find a good date to do that sometime soon. Any questions?
Is there any problem if we, since we don't have Act Nine in front of us, wait the next meeting to do that?
No, that's fine.
No, no, for sure. I believe we need to pass it twice before we do it on the phone set.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure, so Terry will know what you have to do. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Megan here, S.R.I.M., Terry.
Blue shoes. There she goes.
First of all, I'd like to say Late Night Shoppers was a great success. The businesses that were just expanded would like to put us a vacant next year, so we've got a good gauge of how successful it was. There was a lot of activity on the street that night. Also, the Keystone communities application is still awaiting approval from DCED, which we hope to receive in the next month or so. Our 2014 membership campaign has begun, so we welcome any business who would be interested or any individuals to become new members this year. And light fast decorations are in process of being taken down. In regard to SPAR, we have a, the new Arts Council, I'm sorry, Albright Center Council will be meeting for the first time this week and getting organized to start the Albright Center project. We are still seeking additional funding sponsors, of course, and the hometown veterans banners, we are accepting new applications for new banners and also rehands as of immediately in order to have that ready for the spring. As far as business and economic development, they're still working on that list of vacant properties throughout the city of Sundary and conducting surveys on how to attract new businesses to the area. They're doing that as a prerequisite for requesting marketing funds for specific businesses to run to our region, our city. In regard to New Year's Eve, thanks again to our grand sponsors, Halla Box on the Park, Service First Credit Union, Nixon Chemical, Wise Markets, PPNL, Sundary Eagles, Sundary Community Hospital, and Sundary Motors. We had a great response this year in people supporting the event and also helping volunteer the event. We really appreciate that for the community. We had over two thousand people attended. The light bulb had a lot of great recognition. We had positive feedback on those social media and the daily item op-ed, and also there was internet recognition of our event, and the top thirty-eight items dropped on New Year's Eve, so it's exciting that on our second year, we're already recognized.
Twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth? Twenty-sixth? It was on the stage talking. Actually ranked now.
We're in a transitional phase with the Elm Street Hill neighborhood without a manager, but we're wrapping that funding up, and that should be happening very soon. Lastly, this is not an ad hoc initiative, but if anybody's familiar with the Our Town Project through WVIA, they are planning to do a video of Sundary community, and there is a one and only opportunity to get involved in that, and that is this Thursday at six-thirty at the Davidson Library. So please spread the word. If you know anyone who has any videos, photographs, or has any concerns about, you know, what they might like to see in this video, please send them to that meeting, because that's going to organize it and make.
That's at six-thirty?
Thursday at six-thirty at the Davidson Library.
I just want to mention on that, there's a, we want to try to use that, get away from the history, more or less, use the history and where we're at now, so we can use it as almost like a marketing tool, show all the positive things that are happening now, plus with the history in the background, how we got to this point, where we want to go from here. So it could be a huge opportunity for the city to use it, like I say, as a marketing tool to promote. So if you have a chance, if you want to get involved at all, or at least come down on Thursday night and see what it's all about, and I don't know that everybody there has to hold the camera, has to write any editorials, but you might be able to help out in any way, shape, or form, which would be good to help promote the city. Thank you. Also, did want to mention that we've been meeting Megan, myself, and Dale, meeting a lot of the job descriptions and everything for the Keystone grant, or opportunity grants that's coming through, and you'll hear more about that in very near future. Predevelopment Authority, I just want to mention, they met last Thursday, getting the updated list together. We're down to four or five properties. We'll probably have an auction coming up in March. We'll be announcing that. We're going to have a retreat in the next four to six weeks, spend a little more time on what we need to do as far as establishing the list. We just have other issues coming up as far as positive things in the city of Sundary. So, but we want to get the list down. The list, there used to be about fifty-four properties, is down to somewhere in six to ten rounds, and then we have block grant money funding situations, and then we have other non-block grant funding, so there's different rules for each of them. So it's important that we sit down now and get the list updated, add to them. Some people have been calling into the code office and updating those addresses, so we want to get that down and see which direction we can move on some of these, and we're still taking, anybody calls into the mayor's office, I just had somebody today call in, so, you know, we're working together, get a lot of things done, and you'll hear more of that in future meetings. New business, first thing on agenda for new business is to, the appointment of Council Director, yeah, Director of Council Finance. We interviewed four people last week, and the floor is open for nominations to fill this position.
I'd like to nominate John Schittman for the position.
I'll second it.
Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Other people? John will serve until two years left open by Treasury troops, moving forward, moving on, or moving somewhere. Moving on, that's what.
Sideways.
Rick, you want a first reading on these fees, or what are you going to do there?
Yeah, I'm going to change PM 1001.4 on our code, section four that now says the Code Enforcement Office may impose a reinspection fee of twenty-five dollars if more than two inspections on a property are required. A failure to appeal for the reinspection shall result in imposition of double. I'm going to change that to the Code Office will impose a twenty-five dollar fee per unit for every reinspection that fails to make the required repairs within a running timeframe for all violations listed on the original inspection form.
Mr. Mayor, I'll see that in my packet, and then I have time to review that. Okay? Or we can either use it as a first reading and discuss it, or we can hold the whole thing off and discuss it when we get it. What do we have now? What is it now?
It's things right now, basically, it's very similar, because I guess we can impose them after a failed reinspection, but it's kind of, it's kind of a gray area. The Code Office may impose a reinspection fee of twenty-five dollars if more than two inspections of a property are required.
One of my concerns is this is going back here in the landlord once again. My other question is, Mr. Right here, I know you're gentlemen are professionals. If they should miss an appointment, get one, or be late, do we get twenty-five dollars because I ended up late or not showed up?
No, no. We're going to use our discretion on this. I think they have before, but it's kind of defined now, and they're going to, they have a little bit different stuff down in the Code Office now. The Code Office are empowered to do the job right now, and I'm only going to get involved if there's a situation. I mean, we can't come to a logical or reasonable answer.
Well, I can see at the table until I have time to read the whole section.
Let's, if you don't mind, Rick, that way you can address, ask Jim to give you right away, or tell you if there's any other concerns, you can address them all at the same time. It's not like it's going anywhere next week. Is that all right?
That's fine, Rick.
I just can put that on hold. For the minutes, we want to make sure that Act Ninety is on the next agenda, too, so we're back on that. Mill Street property waiver?
Okay, we have a letter from Brian Fausso, which bought three lots, or one lot, I think it was bought from, Brian, are you here? Your lot was, your lot was bought from the government authority, has one lot, is that correct? Okay. Okay, the purpose of this letter is to respectfully request a waiver of the stormwater management plan for the aforementioned property, I think it's ten, seems eight and ten? Miller Street, that was torn down by the redevelopment authority. Mr. Fausso bought the property and he wants to put a two-unit, a two-unit property on it, a double home or something like that, and he needs a waiver of our waste, our storm management plan, because he, our code book says right now that any property that is over five thousand feet, square feet. So he's requesting this, and I'm going to, I'm going to revert to John. John's been working with the guy, our city engineer, on it, and he can explain a little bit more in detail as to what we're going to be involved with. Basically, a building was taken off of that property that was forty by eighty, and a building that was drawn on it is twenty-four by eighty, which we create, just by the natural building, less stormwater runoff. So John with the police. Yes, attached to Mr. Fausso's letter, it's a letter from Brian Olin, P.E., and attached to the engineer's letter is a calculations, predevelopment and postdevelopment. And the calculations demonstrate that after the development of the property, there will be less imperviousness, less flow than had occurred when the existing building is there before it was torn down by the city. So if you grant the waiver, you're allowing Mr. Falcone, his engineer, to use the pre-existing condition as with that building like it was there, and you're contrasting that with the proposed building, which is less imperviousness than the previous one. And that results in not only less than ten percent, which the ordinance requires of increased runoff, it's actually less runoff than from the previous one. So that's the waiver that you're considering. Now, had our 1990 ordinance been written in accordance with current state law, instead of saying, "This property would have been eligible for an exemption," in other words, you wouldn't have to come for the waiver, the exemption would have been based on the fact that the proposed construction is less, the constructed area is less than five thousand square feet, but because this lot is more than five thousand square feet, and because our ordinance talks about the five thousand square feet as a function of the lot, not as a disturbance, that's why it doesn't qualify for the exemption, and that's why it's applying for the waiver. If the waiver is granted, then we will proceed in accordance with our law to try to get other approvals and holding the appearance of the duplex of the drawing. And the documentation was provided by O'Gallan Engineering LLC, and you're satisfied with what you read in that, John? Yes. Then I'd like to make a motion that we give Mr. Fausso a waiver. So continue.
Ister?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thanks for going over that, John.
Thanks a lot.
Need approval, well, Mr. Schittman will be the Director of Council Finances in the future, so for right now, I believe everybody in your pack has the total pay invoices, I mean, they're totaled up to eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-one cents. Need a motion to accept that? Do them all at the same time? Okay, and liquid fuel is a five thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-two cents. Right here, move. Accept vote.
I'll second it.
Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Believe the tax collector from collecting 2013. All right, this is, and we do this every year at the end of the year, but it does relieve the tax collector from collecting 2013 taxes, turns around, and, you know, so we have the new people for the next year. And that is who, Kevin?
Statewide for us, county and us all.
Turn, you have a motion to grant that? Need a second?
Second.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Christine?
No, we need a motion, oh, I need a motion to accept tax, statewide tax recovery as the appointment for the delay of tax flight.
I'd like that motion.
Need a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to deliver the delay of taxes, delay of tax flight. Need a second?
Ister? Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And therefore, also should be a listing of tax exemptions. Need a motion to accept those?
I'll second it.
Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Back yes, the 2014 board appointments. Let's take, well, let's move this way, let's take the civil service, all these people that haven't notified and are willing to fill these New Years, these New Years of Service. For civil service, we have Ted and Levins a three-year term. For housing authority, we have Michael Hogan, a five-year term. For the hard board, we have Dan Strausser and Cindy Inkro, four-year terms. Zoning Hearing Board, Jesse Widering and Gene Eckrod, three-year terms. Board of Appeals, Todd Raybuck and Preston Ross, three-year terms. Municipal Authority, Norm Koch and Tom McBryan, five-year terms. Need a motion to accept those?
I'll second it.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
The Recreation Board has a vacancy on it. Jim, do you have anybody to nominate for that?
We'll go next meeting, yes. I did talk to them, you haven't come in over very long with the server on there.
All right, so for tonight, the Recreation Board is Ron Pratt, a four-year, are these all four?
Ronnie Teller, four years.
The rest are one-year. The Recreation Board is Ron Pratt, a four-year term, Mindy Huffman, Lynn DeHaer, Jenna Ister, all one-year terms, which leaves one vacancy for the next meeting. Need a motion to accept? Need a second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
I'm going to stay because my daughter on the board.
Christine?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Audience comment? Anything specific anybody wants to talk about? Yes, sir, just come up in front.
My name is Greg Zaxton. Concerning the cameras in Sundary, they've been installed to help prevent crime. I've asked the Sundary City Council questions without cameras in question, and was not given any answers to those questions. I again ask you to answer those questions, as any responsible city council would certainly be liable to do. You can go through the questions if you like.
Will you leave us a copy to answer, or what?
I asked for these over a month ago.
I don't remember ever seeing a piece of paper from you that you question.
If you want to leave them here, we'll have an opportunity to answer. I'll get you a copy. Basically, the questions are, are the cameras monitored in real time so they can prevent crime as it may occur?
No.
If the cameras are not being monitored in real time, why not?
Because we have said that we want to have them set up.
If the cameras are being, are, how is information removed from all of the cameras? That is, can the information be retrieved at one central location from any one or all of the cameras?
They can retrieve all of them, not one central location, that was never the intent.
So they have to go to each camera individually?
No, certain areas, certain areas go together.
Okay, so they could retrieve from a certain area from that area's location, but not all of them from one location?
No.
I only want to add, Mr. Zaxton, there are some changes being made, we're putting some of those cameras on source electric cable, which will change that. Now, here again, you're addressing, you know, the chief is the one who has access still, so he possibly can give you more answers than any of us.
That was my next question. Who has access to the information recorded on the cameras? Probably how you, only, only one person?
No. Sundary Police Department.
Sundary Police Department, yes.
Someone retrained, that's right, not every one of them.
And do the cameras have night vision?
Some of them. They're different type cameras. Every camera is a different type cameras. They're all the same type.
Why do some of the cameras not have that? That would render them ineffective during dark hours.
In some places, we're not concerned about dark hours.
Okay. Who made the decision as to where the cameras would be deployed?
Councilman Snyder is a big person, in fact, then the chief, myself, then, I think all the councilmen involved had the opportunity, so who actually picked where each one of them went? I don't know that in front of me, but everybody had, council had impact.
Well, it was reported in the daily item, there would be two hundred cameras. Why are there only five?
That's not correct.
That is correct.
That was, I wondered reported in the daily item, but I sat in the meeting, there was two hundred thousand dollars spent on cameras, and it could buy fifty cameras. That's all we had the money to buy for at that time. I sat right in that meeting when five brought it up.
I think it was due to the two hundred thousand dollars, that's where you get the two hundred.
Yeah, I don't know where the two hundred cameras were fabricated from, but the two hundred cameras were never, were never talked about for clouds.
Can't believe everything in the daily, I don't know.
That's absolutely correct, James.
There's never any talk.
There was talk in this room that the cameras would run twelve hundred dollars feet. There was talking this, the cameras would run $1,200 a piece. Maybe at the very beginning, but like I say, we have, we have all different types of cameras, we don't just go with one type of camera.
There was more than just the cameras, too. The cameras might have been $1,200 a piece, but the boxes, that records the stuff on the cameras, the hardware and everything like that. I can't speak for what was done with the city, but I can speak, the Eagles, the Eagles put money up to purchase two cameras for the city's use, going down Third Street and now Chestnut Street, and we paid $5,000 for two cameras and the controls, the weatherheads and everything, and the box that does the recording. That was the clause according to Councilman Snyder.
Okay, so there's a box for every camera?
No, a box can, can hold up to 10 cameras.
Okay, so that lets a lot of money unaccounted for. The price is, you're talking at $5,000 for two cameras and a box. So if you can get 10 cameras, I guess what I'm asking is there's, is there equipment that's not installed as of yet, or is there grant money remaining for some function of additional work on the cameras, on that system?
I would say, and I'm a positive, Mr. Saxton, but I don't think there's any money left because of money was used of course installation, but some of the numbers you're using, okay, and I'm not sure exactly which camera cost about or what it costs for the which box, so, but when they were purchased, we get you all the numbers.
Okay.
But there's no, as far as my knowledge, no money laying on the table, there's no money, it's disappropriate, there's no money stolen.
I didn't say it was stolen or disappropriate.
But you guys flying that, you know, you're going around and circle about the prices of cameras and the 200, and now we're down, where they're installed and what lenses and so forth. What are you trying to get at? What do you want to know?
I'll come to that, very shortly.
Well, the grant's closed now. Maybe we can come to it faster. The grant's closed out.
That answers the question.
So you just think that the bonus penalty?
It's gone. I mean, the grant is expired.
Right, that doesn't mean we can't hook up cameras in the future. That's just meaning that grant for that prior is expired.
I understand.
Okay.
It appears that Sundary cameras were of very little use in solving the recent murder that occurred in the city. Because obviously, there were other, other places, other people asked for video, had they been able to solve that, or a police department. And I'm not detracting from the police department in any way. I think they did a great job, very tough.
Want to turn around and ask the chief what he feels?
Oh, no.
Chief, do you have a comment on that?
What's your question?
That the cameras were of very little help in that particular case. And the cameras didn't appear to be of any use in the robbery of children that occurred at the Sundary Skate Park on August 23rd, 2013. Is that correct?
I'm not sure the dates, but I don't know if they were active at that point.
And my last comment is that you might reconsider or consider repositioning some of the cameras as ever seen glued, possibly, sometime you might do, so that they would be more effective.
Where would you suggest, since it appears you've been studying this, where would you suggest?